Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The North Ridgeville City Council meeting is now in session. Today is Monday, January sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. At the beginning of this new year, we ask for your guidance and wisdom so the decisions we make are for the betterment of our city and its people. We ask you to grant us the clarity to act with integrity, courage, and compassion, and may our work help to bring about prosperity to our city. We offer this in gratitude. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Swink.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Avens.
Here.
Winkle.
Here.
Awig.
Here.
De Vries.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Law Director.
Here.
Engineer.
Here.
Finance Director.
Here.
Assistant Clerk Counsel here.
All right, thank you, everybody, and Happy New Year. First, we have the public hearing meeting minutes dated December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We also have the regular city council meeting minutes also dated December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Right, hearing none, those minutes stand approved as well. And note, council has also received the Board of Zoning and Building Appeals meeting minutes dated December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We'll move on to our lobby session. For those who may not be familiar, the lobby session is the portion of our meeting in which the public's allowed an opportunity to address council as well as the city administration. Audience members wishing to speak should speak from the podium and from the podium only, please. We do ask that you begin by stating your name and address for the record, at which time you will be allowed up to three minutes to speak regarding matters pertaining to the city of North Ridgeville or the business of city council. Also, in the interest of time, the lobby session is not intended to be an interactive question and answer session, but nonetheless, we do appreciate your and welcome your feedback, and depending on the nature of your comments, a council member may contact you back. At this time, the lobby session is now open. Is there anybody who wishes to address council this evening? Seem none? The lobby session is now closed, and we'll move on to administrators' reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On tonight's agenda, we have two thousand and twenty-five dash one, an ordinance amending two thousand and twenty-four one oh three, Exhibits A and B. We will ask for the emergency clause on that legislation. I hope everybody's had a chance to go through the roundabout. It's very exciting. There was massive media attention on it, so pretty happy that it's open on the roadside of things. There's still some final grading, seating, and landscaping that'll take place in the spring, and as of now, we have had no accidents there, so that's a great thing. I have gotten a lot of positive feedback from people that live in that area, so I was pretty happy with that, too. We do have full-time police officer class D and full-time firefighter paramedic class D exams. If you're interested in joining our safety forces, testing and applications will be accepted through February seventeenth, and you can get those application packets on the city's website at nridgsville.org. If you have a live Christmas tree, there'll be special Christmas tree collection, and that is the first two weeks in January, which is tonight or tomorrow morning when they pick it up, and next Tuesday, January fourteenth, to make sure your tree is at your curbside by six a.m. on collection day. Our city hall offices will be closed on Martin Luther King Day, which is Monday, January twentieth, so that means our meeting will be on the twenty-first, on Tuesday. At this point in time, I make the motion to reappoint Frank Toth to the Planning Commission.
Second.
If you remember, Mr. Toth was appointed to fill the remainder of her term. That term is now over, and this would be to a full term for that body.
The motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to reappoint Frank Toth to the Planning Commission. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Avens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
De Vries.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Seven zero to adopt. To reappoint.
All right, and then on to a BZBA appointment. Mr. Brad Weaver is in the audience this evening, and if you remember, Brad took part in the Master Plan Committee, you know, was played an important role on that and had expressed an interest in continuing his involvement in our government activities. So we have an opening due to the retirement end of term of Sean Kimball, and so this would be a full-time appointment to there, so I will make the motion to appoint Brad Weaver to the BZBA.
Second.
The motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Swink to appoint Brad Weaver to the BZBA. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Avens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
De Vries.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Seven zero to appoint.
Thank you very much, Brad. I told you seven ten, it's seven oh six, so beat that. At this point, I make the motion to go into executive session for two different reasons. One, to consider the appointment employment dismissal, discipline promotion demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, and also to conference with the public's body's attorney concerning pending or imminent court action.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing those matters just explained by the mayor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Swink.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Avens.
Yes.
Winkle.
Yes.
Awig.
Yes.
De Vries.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Seven zero to adjourn to executive session.
It should be like ten or fifteen minutes.
Oh, yeah. Always.
I'm gonna get some water.
Okay.
Sorry.
You wanna go ahead?
Seven thirty-five, maybe.
Sweet work.
Depends on how fast he moves his, uh, right.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swank?
I move to adjourn from executive session and return to regular council session.
Second.
The motion was made by Swank and seconded by AWIG to adjourn executive session and to return to regular session. Clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Seven zero to reconvene regular session.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, please continue with your report.
That concludes my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Maddock Road is scheduled to open sometime tomorrow with the culvert replacement project coming to an end. There are still some outstanding items that it'll have to wait for warmer weather to address, including some traffic striping and seeding the tree lawn areas. A few members of council have reached out to engineering about mud on the streets recently, created by the developers working on private projects in the city. I just want to assure you, this is not something we condone nor appreciate, especially during the holidays. I know we have extra visitors in town for the holidays and it's not something that, um, uh, we, we really condone. I have discussed internally ways to address this without insistent calling or emailing to the builders or having to write citations or stop work orders, which can be time-consuming. I've found that other communities institute either a mud bond or a mud deposit prior to issuing building permits, and I think that's something that we would like to address in the future. The stormwater utility fee for 2025 has been adjusted to reflect the Engineering News' Record Construction Cost Index annual inflation rate, which was found to be point nine percent, thereby increasing our ERU rate from four dollars and sixty-nine cents to four dollars and seventy-three cents a month. Aiden Apshire is a returning co-op student to the Engineering Department. He is a civil engineering student at the University of Toledo and will be with us till May. Aiden will be concentrating on reviewing our historic water main records to try to further us along with our lead reporting endeavor as required by the EPA. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Director of Finance?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right. Please note the council has also received the November 2024 Police Department report and the December 2024 Building Division report. We have one piece of correspondence. Clerk, if you could please read the correspondence.
City Project Engineer Eric Brown's memo regarding the Stormwater Utility (SW) Fee Increase That Took Effect On January 1st, 2025.
Thank you. And that brings us to recess.
Mr. President, move to dispense with recess.
Second.
The motion was made by Winkle and seconded by AWIG to dispense with recess. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. Recess has been dispensed. We'll move on to first readings, and we have 2025-1.
2025-1 and ordinance amending ordinance 2024-103 Exhibit A and Exhibit B, creating the positions of Chief Prosecutor under the Law Department and ground maintenance foremen under the Public Works Department and amending certain part-time classifications and ranges for the Division of Parks and Recreation.
I'll make a motion to amend 2025-1 by substitution with the version of Exhibit A that has been provided at our seats this evening.
Second.
Motion was made by Jacobs and seconded by Winkle to dispense with the bylaws and amend 2025-1 by substitution. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings of 2025-1 amended.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Abens to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-1. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause so that way we can get people in these positions and operate government efficiently.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Abens to add the emergency clause to 2025-1 for the reasons stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Abens to adopt 2025-1 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Seven zero to adopt ordinance number 2025-1.
Under second readings, we have 2024-142.
2024-142 and ordinance amending Section 854.99 Penalty of North Ridgeville Codified Ordinances, Chapter 854, Peddlers, Canvassers, and Solicitors.
Under third readings, we have 2024-136.
2024-136 and ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of North Ridgeville such that permanent parcel number 0700046101006 located at 39462 Center Ridge Road be rezoned from I-3 Heavy Industrial District to B-3 Highway Commercial District.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swank?
Move to adopt.
Second.
It was moved by Swank and seconded by Winkle to adopt 2024-136. Clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Seven zero to adopt 2024-136.
As the mayor mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, since City Hall will be closed on Monday, January 20th in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day, our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 21st, 2025, at 7:00 PM here in council chambers. This meeting is adjourned.